Welcome, everyone. I call the May tenth, twenty twenty-two regular city council meeting to order. I am going to recite the Pledge of Allegiance, so everyone else, please meet your microphones, turn off your video while we display the banner. Give everybody a minute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Councilmember Zorn's, I hope that was a little slower. A little. Before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our remote meeting format. Proclamation twenty twenty-eight regarding open public meetings is still in effect. Therefore, this meeting will be held entirely remotely. Public comment will be allowed both in writing or verbally. Sign-up sheets were provided by the City Clerk's office via link from the agenda. The video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting. If you've called in, we ask that you mute your device so as to not interfere with the meeting. If a participant fails to meet their connection and causes a disruption to the meeting, the connection will be terminated. For our phoning callers, during staff presentations, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they're referencing, so everyone can follow along. At this point, we'll take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position number. Please say here when the city clerk calls your name.
Councilmember Zorn's?
Here.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Alderks?
Here.
Councilmember McNeil?
Here.
Councilmember Manki?
Here.
Councilmember Dorr?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Alco?
Here.
All present.
Thank you, city clerk. Next, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For all meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Mute your microphone when not speaking. If you're also streaming the live video feed, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. For council, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom or your yellow card when you wish to speak, and I will call on you. Speak clearly and pause frequently, and remember to mute your mic when not speaking. The first item on the agenda is meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
Mr. Mayor, if I could be heard?
Of course. Please say.
So I'd, with the council's intelligence, I would like to request that you add a very brief executive session pursuant to RCW forty-two thirty-one one zero sub one sub F to evaluate, pull up the exact language here. I thought I had that already up. Oh, there it is. To receive and evaluate complaints or charges brought against a public officer or employee, we anticipate it lasting approximately fifteen minutes. In order to add that to the agenda at this point, that would require a motion, a second, and a vote of the council. Informal vote of show of hands would suffice for these purposes, but that would be my request this evening.
Councilmember Dewar?
I motion that we added an executive session of fifteen minutes for the RCW stated by the city attorney.
Going to be super impressed if you rattled it off. Councilmember Alderks?
Can I second the motion?
All right, I've got a motion on the floor and a second. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Can we just get a show of hands? Everybody thinks yes? All right, I see at least four. I think I see seven. Thank you, city attorney.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to public engagement opportunities. All right, upcoming public engagement opportunities. We have the North Urban Human Services Alliance Affordable Housing Week event. You can join NUSA at noon on Wednesday, May eleventh, to learn about the work North King County cities are doing to create more options for affordable housing. It'll be kind of a snapshot of the landscape in North King County with brief presentations from Bothell, Kenmore, Lake Forest Park, and Shoreline council members and staff. And I believe, uh, councilmember Alderks and I will be there along with Dave Boyd. There's going to be a missing housing or middle housing online forum on May thirty-first from six to seven thirty PM. You can see more information at bothelwa.gov for both of those. All right, moving on to a proclamation for Affordable Housing Week. Thank you. Whereas all people should have access to safe, healthy, and affordable homes within communities that provide opportunity. And whereas the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development defines affordable housing as housing on which the occupant is paying no more than thirty percent of gross income for housing costs, including utilities. And whereas studies have found that each hundred-dollar increase in median rent results in a fifteen percent increase in homelessness in metro areas and a thirty-nine percent increase in homelessness in nearby suburbs and rural areas. And whereas the COVID nineteen pandemic has exacerbated many existing financial constraints for low and moderate income households. And whereas everyone benefits from affordable housing, including the people who reside in these properties, their neighbors, businesses, employers, and the community as a whole. And whereas the need for affordable homes across King County prior to the COVID nineteen pandemic and the number of people experiencing homelessness has remained at crisis levels. And whereas United to raise public awareness, people, organizations, and communities throughout King County are participating in local Affordable Housing Week activities to elevate the critical need to create healthy communities with ample affordable housing. And whereas the city of Bothell endorses the goals, objectives, and purposes of Affordable Housing Week, and in doing so firmly recommits itself to ensuring that and that all people in Bothell live with dignity in safe, healthy, and affordable homes. Now, therefore, I, Mason Thompson, do hereby proclaim the week of May eighth to fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, as Affordable Housing Week. All right, next up, we have a proclamation. Oh, no, we have Joe Cunningham, who is here to accept and say a few words. Didn't mean to skip you, Joe.
Thank you, Mayor Thompson and councilmembers. Good evening. My name is Joe Cunningham. I'm a board member of North Urban Human Services Alliance, or NUSA. On behalf of the Housing Development Consortium, NUSA, and our member organizations, I'm pleased to join the meeting tonight and accept the Affordable Housing Week proclamation. As an alliance of providers, cities, faith organizations, and community leaders, NUSA advocates for a strong and accessible health and human services system and a critical piece to ensuring this includes shelter and housing. All people should have access to safe, healthy, and affordable homes. HUD defines affordable housing as costing no more than thirty percent of gross income for housing costs, including utilities. The COVID nineteen pandemic has exacerbated many existing financial constraints for low and moderate income households. As an example, a hundred-dollar increase in median rent results in a nineteen or fifteen percent increase in homelessness in metro areas and a thirty-nine percent increase in homelessness in nearby suburbs and rural areas. The need for affordable homes across King County prior to the COVID nineteen pandemic and the number of people experiencing homelessness has remained at crisis levels. Bothell, however, deserves recognition for the significant strides it has taken of to address the shortage of affordable housing. In addition to implementing inclusionary zoning in many residential and commercial areas, Bothell has also implemented an MFTE program with ambitious housing targets. Additionally, Bothell is leading unique and ongoing middle housing code amendments is providing support for King County's health through housing program to explore purchasing a site for permanent supportive housing. And Bothell has provided both land and zoning changes to ensure a deep, deeply affordable senior housing project in a key corridor which is nearly under construction. Bothell was a worthy recipient in March of this year's Housing Development Consortium Municipal Champion Award, which recognizes exemplary leadership and significantly contributing to the state and affordable housing in our region. NUSA looks forward to supporting Bothell's combined work, and we're glad to join Bothell and others throughout King County in celebrating Affordable Housing Week and in elevating the critical and crucial need for creating healthy communities with ample affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we have a proclamation for Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And councilmember Dewar, would you read this, please?
I will. Thank you very much, Mayor. Whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islander Heritage Month is observed nationally in the month of May, chosen to commemorate the immigration of the first Japanese to the United States on May seventh, eighteen forty-three, and to mark the anniversary of the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad on May tenth, eighteen sixty-nine, as the majority of workers who laid the tracks were Chinese immigrants. And whereas this recognition encompasses all of the Asian continent and the Pacific Islands of Melanesia, Micronesia, and Polynesia, and whereas the diverse Asian and Pacific Islander population in Washington State numbers more than seven hundred thousand, making them the second-largest and fastest-growing minority population and is representative of forty-eight Asian and Pacific Island nations. And whereas a large percentage of the population in Bothell identify as Asian and Pacific Islander, composed of varied ethnicities, languages, and cultures that contribute to our community's progress, success, and vibrancy. And whereas we must acknowledge and address a documented regional and nationwide trend of increased discrimination, hate, and violence against Asian Americans exacerbated by false narratives and xenophobia around the coronavirus. And whereas the institutional racism that Asian and Pacific Islander communities face cannot erase the resilience, strength, accomplishments, and joy of the people now and throughout history, making their character and legacies even more inspirational and reinforcing that education, celebration, and public awareness is vital to our community health. Now, therefore, I, in the name of Mason Thompson, do hereby proclaim May twenty twenty-two as Asian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the city of Bothell. The city makes this proclamation to honor our Asian and Pacific Islander community and recognize the opportunity the celebration provides to educate the public on the Asian-Pacific role in American history and promote the advancement of civil rights and equal opportunity for all. Signed this day, the tenth day of May, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, councilmember Dewar. I, um, I read a proclamation when I was on the Parks Board for Arbor Day, and I had no idea how I was going to handle that, and I didn't think about it before I started, and I got to the bottom, and I was like, I don't know, I'm going to handle this, and I thought you did that very well.
Mayor Thompson, we do have Jessica Chung in the audience to accept the proclamation.
Fantastic. Thank you, Jessica.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jessica Chung. I am a member of the DEI Public Advisory Committee for the city of Bothell, as well as a new member of the Library Board. Um, and I'm happy to accept this proclamation on behalf of the community of Asian American and Pacific Islanders in Bothell and across Washington for Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Um, I hope that we will see a lot more effort for understanding and cultural awareness and education around the history of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders in this country and in Washington specifically, um, and that our interest in that culture will go beyond just food and celebrations, but also dealing with the complex issues that our communities face in this community and beyond. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jessica. All right, next, we have a presentation on cultural place-making, creating community through arts and culture. And we have the Chair of our Arts Commission, Hillary Long, here to present to us. Hi, Hillary.
Good evening. Hello. Thank you for having me. I am Hillary Long, and while I am the Chair of the Arts Commission, I am someone who is very passionate about cultural place-making and has done research and academic writing, and I'm just here to tell you more in terms of an idea of ways to look at development in Bothell in a, hopefully, a new, exciting way. Let me share my screen. Okay, here we go. Cultural place-making. So there's many definitions of place-making. Um, and I like this one. Place-making inspires people to collectively reimagine and re-event public spaces at the heart of a community. And I like this one because it encompasses the spirit of place-making. And I think that a great example of this is the pilot closure of Main Street. Now, that was just place-making. Let's add culture. So cultural place-making is strengthening communities with art at the core. Creative place-making integrates arts, cultures, and design activities into efforts that strengthen communities. Creative place-making requires partnership across sectors, deeply engages the community, involves artists, designers, and culture bearers, and helps to advance local economic, physical, and/or social change. So this definition is intentionally open and broad because creative place-making draws on all artistic disciplines and can be deployed as a strategy to address just a wide range of community issues or challenges. I mean, everything from public health to safety, to economic development, to housing. All of it can be addressed through cultural place-making. It's, and I should say, it's also sometimes referred to as creative place-making. So while place-making reimagines design and space, cultural place-making goes deeper, and it also considers economy and social change, not just that physical space. Some benefits for the community. Arts and culture and design can help strengthen communities by bringing new attention to community assets, the voices of residents, injecting newer additional energy, resources, activity, or people into a place or a local economy, envisioning new possibilities for a community or place, and then connecting communities. So when thinking about cultural place-making and the benefits, the major theme here is connection. It's connection between city and city staff and residents, different sections of our community, cultures, and just everything in between. So let me give you an example of a local place where cultural place-making really made a difference. So Yesler Terrace is a community in kind of the South Capitol Hill, South Seattle area. And it was a low-income vibrant community. There were more languages spoken per capita in that area than any other place in, I believe, the country. And what made this low-income housing unique was that there were a lot of townhouse, townhomes, not just apartments, and the townhomes had yards. Those yards ended up being vital to healthy living, growing gardens, providing food and subsidizing food for the residents. And like all of Seattle, and like we've seen in Bothell, it's slated for redevelopments. All those apartments and all those townhouses, townhouses, I believe, are now gone, and development is in its place. So knowing that this was a very connected community and that not everyone was going to return after redevelopment, the Yesler Terrace Youth Media Project was born. And this was a partnership with Seattle University, and they set out to capture that community, to tell stories. Talk about what made this community special, why it was important. And so because of this project, it got all of this information, and this youth media project got back to the developers, and the plans were changed. So if you look at just the left of this picture, there's a pee patch. And as I understand it, before the youth media project, there wasn't a pee patch. But they knew it was important to the community, and so as this development is now going to be mixed-income housing with some low-income housing and market-rate housing, they knew it was important for the residents who were coming back to have that pee patch. That is a great example of cultural place-making making a difference. So what could cultural place-making look like in Bothell? I think we have two great starts with the pilot closure of Main Street. Let's see what that could mean for the community and for the Friday Night Series. Um, you know, that's a gathering space. It's a festival. It's civic pride. Some other ideas would be, as we're looking at, we as in the city is looking at more development. Can we have those gathering spaces like what Yesler Terrace did to promote community, ways to bring people together? Could we, could you, the cultural space, create cultural space for economic development, support artists, support makers, support creators? Maybe incubator space for small businesses or small restaurants. Could Bothell have an arts district? Could we have increased pedestrian pathways? Could we enhance wayfinding, maybe from North Bothell into downtown Bothell, and really bring a cohesive language to all of Bothell? Cultural place-making is not just about the integration of visual expressions, visual expressions of art, but also the things that, by appealing to our shared humanity, help connect us all. And cultural place-making is something that, it's, well, it's what it's not is the thing that you say, if we spend X dollars per capita are, you know, we're going to see a benefit of X dollars or X whatever in return. There is an invisible benefit, but I think we all know when we, we see towns that have it, and we all know when we see towns that don't. So I invite questions. I'm happy to talk further about this, and thank you for having me tonight.
Does anybody have questions for Hillary? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you. Thank you, Hillary, so much. This is a great presentation. I wish you gave the presentation last week when we were talking about Lot EFG or two weeks ago. Because then that would have been a great way to see how we can experiment with those ideas on that lot that's going to go to sparking a bunch of cars going to look ugly. Imagine all these ideas you have over there in a prime location. Explore with you, if it's possible, with you and staff, how we can leverage, how we can experiment with your ideas on that, in that space. Great place to have creative community space connected to Main Street and other Friday morning stuff.
Yeah, I would welcome to be a part of any communication, any conversation you would like to have me at.
Councilmember Alderks?
I just want to say thank you, Hillary, for being here and for this presentation, especially for grounding your presentation, not just in art, but also in culture, recognizing how our, how lived experiences are a really important part of building community. And so to be able to connect it to beyond, you know, beyond a pretty place, but to be a place where people are able to to go and get both what they need, but also to be uplifted in those spaces. So just thank you so much, and I would absolutely love to hear some of your thoughts along the lines of Deputy Mayor's question. Thank you.
Yes, I, I am happy to join any conversation, and you know, I think we're at a unique place where people are really getting out and they're wanting to do stuff, but they want that connection. So I really hope that I can help in any way I can to think differently about what development and what connection and community mean, so.
Well, Hillary, thank you so much for your service on the Arts Commission. Thank you for coming here tonight to chat with us about this. Uh, we, we really appreciate it. I'm super glad you're in town.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. All right, next up, we have some staff briefings. First, we have Jacqueline Brandonberg, our Deputy Public Works Director, to give us an update on the Safe Streets and Sidewalks Levy.
Thank you, Mayor. I will work on sharing my screen. See, hopefully I share the right screen. Let me try. Are you seeing the presentation? All right, and you can hear me, I assume. All right, thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. I am here tonight to present our twenty twenty-one annual report for the Safe Streets and Sidewalks Program. Hopefully you had a chance to see our report. I believe a link to the website was sent out to you on Friday afternoon, so hopefully had a chance to review that over the weekend. I'm going to start by providing a little bit of, a little bit of background information. Thank you to our Bothell residents. The Safe Streets and Sidewalks Levy Live Lift was approved by voters in two thousand sixteen. It is a nine-year levy, and it is scheduled to expire at the end of twenty twenty-five. I anticipate you'll be hearing quite a bit more in the next biennium, and certainly the biennium after that from our department on what the next steps are after it does expire. You can see from the bar chart on the right there what the levy distribution was for the revenue in twenty twenty-one. Fifty-six percent of the twenty twenty-one levy revenue was dedicated to our street operations program, thirty-five to payment preservation, and nine percent to the sidewalk and cross rock program. And I'll get into that in a little more detail in a future slide. Yeah, you can also see that the per assessed value rate, for the most part, went down every year with the exception of twenty twenty-one when it leveled off. And factors that impact this include growth or new construction, as well as an increase or a decrease in property values. And in the case of recent years, it was the increase of property values and growth in construction. Let's see. And then, as I mentioned before, the annual accountability report that was published, the website on Friday, but for the benefit of the public, if you want to find that report, it's at www.bothelwa.gov/safestreets. And not only can you find the streets, this year's annual accountability report, but you can find previous years going back to two thousand and seventeen, as well as a lot of other useful information. And as we talked about in the report, the annual revenue in twenty twenty-one was approximately five million. This is the same infographic that you found in the report, so I won't go into a lot of detail here, but hit on a few highlights. As you can see, our street operations is funded primarily by levy revenue to the tune of about two-point-five million dollars and to lesser amounts funded by some state shared revenue, as well as some other miscellaneous revenues. And currently, our street operations is not subsidized by the general fund. And this is a key point because prior to the levy, critical street maintenance activities were reliant on general fund subsidies, and that create challenges, not just from the general fund aspect, but also the ability to maintain our critical street operations functions. You can also see from this infographic that we had a high level of payment preservation grants in two thousand twenty-one, and therefore more spending occurred in that program that year. As opposed to the previous year, we had an infusion of sidewalk grants and saw more spending in that program in twenty twenty. And I, I bring this up to mention or to, to point out that while street operations expenditures tend to stay pretty steady year after year, with some, you know, operational increases built in the spending for the sidewalk and the payment program in particular, it's not uniform year to year, and you'll see quite a bit of fluctuation, and that's impacted by grant funding available or other funding that becomes available. Sometimes it's in, we have partnership opportunities we'll take advantage of, and, and just year-to-year project prioritization will, will create that spending to fluctuate in those programs. Street operations. This is, uh, this is a topic that's near and dear to my heart. Our street maintenance programs are focused on preventative maintenance and public safety. You can see from the list here, I won't go into detail, but you can see that we get a lot of important maintenance activities done throughout the year, and the levy is imperative to funding these activities. I'm sure many of you remember as an example, the snowstorm of December twenty twenty-one, where our crews did an excellent job responding to, to snow and ice. In addition, the levy is funding our annual sidewalk repair and replacement program. This is an in-house program, and it focuses on the repair and replacement of our aging sidewalks, and that focus is on our safe routes to school. Payment preservation. As you read in the report, there are three components to payment preservation, the payment preservation program, and those include arterial asphalt, over. and those include arterial asphalt overlay, resurfacing, the arterial seal and repair and local street seals. So you can see we had some major accomplishments in 2021 that included about 34 miles of cracked ceiling, asphalt patching throughout Bothell, the Slurry Seal Project in the Canyon Creek and Maywood Bexhrem sub-areas, as well as the overlay project in 2028 that was between Bothell Everett Highway and Nineteenth Avenue and the Wanita-Woodenville Way Northeast, Northeast 160th overlay, overlay project. Safe School Walk Routes Program, our Safe School Walk Routes Program focuses on walkways and crosswalks in our school zone areas. And in 2017, the Safe School Walk Routes Task Force convened to prioritize projects for the levy's nine-year duration. Some, well, the major project in 2021, which was a great accomplishment for us, was the completion of the Markings 188 Non-Motorized Improvement Project, which I know you all are very much aware of. And those pictures there are progress pictures, but I think you all have seen the finished product. But to get into the future and what's to come, really, it's more of the excellent work our staff have been doing over the last several years. And street operations will be continuing on going, going maintenance and repair, that focus on preventative maintenance and safety, as well as continuing the sidewalk repair and replacement projects in our school areas. Payment preservation, we have a crack seal project going out this year as well as asphalt patching projects this year. Our overlay project has started in the downtown area. And we are working on some grant opportunities for safe school walk routes and some potential opportunities were listed in the report. So we're waiting to find out if we are successful in those opportunities, but certainly we'll begin, or we will be spending money in this program in 2022, 2023, regardless of whether the city is successful in those grants. But depending on, on if we get any grants, that may change the project prioritization. With that, that is the end of my brief presentation, so I will stop sharing and turn it over to you all if you have any questions. And Steve Markawa is also in attendance.
Councilmember Zorns.
Thanks, Jacqueline. You guys are unsung heroes and I just appreciate so much of what you do for the city of Bothell. I do have a question and it may have been in the report, honest, crossed my heart, I did look at it and I may have missed it. But I became this summer aware of a, a couple areas of where we have sidewalks. Most, well, Maywood is one that has a problem and then, but also around Frank Love where it goes around a curve that there's, that residents whose children walk those streets find that they have to step out into the street. Is there anything in the pipeline for us to go back? And looking just a little bit beyond where our walkers from school need an extra assist with a sidewalk? To navigate safely?
Certainly. I've made note of those areas and Steve, I don't know if you want to chime in if there's anything in the works to fill those gaps, if you know off the top of your head where they might be.
Off the top of my head, I wasn't aware where they were. I know one of the Safe Route to School Grants we're going after is actually the Finnish Sidewalk on the north side of 224th Street West, which kind of feeds into the school there and it's between Meridian and Frank Love. You mentioned around the corner, so I'm not quite sure where you're talking about.
Yeah, sorry. It's, I'll, I'll have to go look at a map and get the specific street. It's on the north side of Frank Love as you go into the homes there.
Okay, yeah, we don't have anything planned to that, but certainly Jacqueline can pass me the information, you can take a look.
Just get it on your radar?
I'm sure it is on our radar. It's all a matter of prioritization versus the, you know, the resources we have.
Okay, well, I'll just double check with you later then on that. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, councilmember.
Councilmember Dewar.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ask, I know that with the state transportation package that recently passed, there's a lot more funding going toward specifically sidewalks. And I wondered at what point we'll know if we can kind of expand potentially our list or move up some projects on our list because of additional grants and wasn't sure if, if the information was out there to know that just yet.
I'll, I'll take a swing at that. So in the immediate future, we're trying to submit Safe Route to School Grants. The program looks to be dollar-wise about three times as large as typically. There were an awful lot of projects every two years trying to get funding and they would only take the top, scheming the surface essentially. There are so many sidewalk needs in Puget Sound region area. This year, we're going to try to submit, I think, up to three projects. And if we're successful, that would be awesome. It is a competition and it is somewhat difficult because we are competing against other agencies that have similar needs. So it all, a lot of it comes down to how many cars, the speeds. If there are accidents there, unfortunately, that's a measure. So safety is one of the big criteria for scoring well. So we will put in our highest priority Safe Route to School projects, but we don't know how well we'll do. We're hoping that even if ours, you know, fortunately, we haven't had accidents, we still get high enough on the list because there's three times the amount of money that we will get at least one or two funded hopefully, but we'll see how it goes. And then I think during this capital facility plan process, that's a discussion we need to have because our sidewalk program is essentially the bucket we use for match funding. And like you know, there's still dollar matched limits for these grants, so we still have to provide our own share. And if it's a high priority and you can put more money into that program, then we can go after more money as well. So that would be an excellent discussion to have in capital facility plans.
Well, and, and I don't want to start the discussion now, but I will be asking in future, when we, when we meet for capital facilities, if our funds could be used for, you know, any of those projects, just because the funding's available and the match is such a big deal. So, but we don't have to have that conversation just yet. Yeah, thanks. I just, I was hoping that because we already have a program and we already have matching dollars that some cities don't have, that it might give us a little boost when it comes to the, the, the grant award process. So, thank you.
Councilmember Aldrichs.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Jacqueline, for this presentation. And I would, I just really appreciate the, the transparency of being able to come back to council and report to us about developments. I appreciate, especially in the West Hill neighborhood, the work that has been done. We now have sidewalks that connect us to 240th. Had Country Village stayed, we would have had a walking path at Country Village. And, and it's really, it's really, has made a difference in our community. And so I, I know that there are other parts of our community that still, that still need, need sidewalk. I appreciate the, the prioritization task force, the work that our community did in figuring out where to prioritize. And one area that I don't think made it on that prioritization list or wasn't particularly high was the Shelton View area. Many of those roads over there are particularly rural. And I know that parents don't particularly feel safe allowing their kids to walk to school in that area. So to Steve Morikawa's point, I really do hope that some of those, those opportunities could be pursued so that we could maybe add additional priorities or, you know, work through that list a little faster. So thank you for your efforts and thanks for being here and presenting to us tonight.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I have unmuted myself. I appreciate it. Thank you, Jacqueline and Steve. This is great info. I just had a question. What goes into the decision? Maybe you can tell me, we'll talk about it in the capital facilities plan. Decision of making, setting the allocated funds to nine percent for sidewalks versus ninety-one percent for streets and pavements?
Yeah, I will, I'll start that answer and then Steve can probably jump in with a little more expertise and I probably can do a good job explaining. So that, that's really just how the allocation broke out in 2021 based on funding that was available and projects that were prioritized. So that really does fluctuate year to year. It's not a set percentage. And I believe in 2021, we saw that sidewalk program is actually pretty high, is higher than the pavement program due to grant funding coming in in 2020. So Steve, you want to add to that?
I think right now for pavement preservation, between several pots of money, including the levy, I think there's a total of about $3 million a year being spent on all our roads. Most of it, ninety percent of it is on arterials because there's just not enough money to go around and the roads continue to degrade. And the longer we let them degrade, the more expensive unfortunately it is to build them back up. So the levy essentially prioritized arterials over all city streets, including local roads. There's some local roads in our city that are very poor, but they're not very highly used. So unfortunately, they don't get to see much preservation, mainly the arterials and the primary arterials. I believe the sidewalk program is up to about $900,000 a year. And there's another $100,000 for crosswalks. And for sidewalks, a portion of that is REIT II funding and a portion of that is levy funding and a portion of that is grant funding. And that's just how that levy turned out and that's the breakout between the two, how we spend it currently. Grant funding in terms of sidewalk, we've been more successful than we anticipated. We're somewhat conservative going in. We were able to get three fairly large grants right off the bat. And that required us to provide a lot of match money upfront, which is kind of why you see kind of a slowing down right now. So we're regrouping, trying to get more grant funds for leverage purpose to make our dollars go further. We've actually, a couple of the projects, we've applied a couple rounds of grants and have not been successful. And we think a couple of reasons is they're not scoring as highly as our original grants. Projects like 188 scored very well, Nineteenth and 32nd scored very well. The other reason is while we were able to get three grants in a short period of time, we were likely, we're unlikely to get more funding until we kind of spent that money. So now that we're done, we're hoping that we can regroup and get more funds again, which is why we're submitting probably about, again, I think we're going to put in three projects to see if we can get going again with funding.
Yeah, thank you. I asked because, I mean, from this chart that you showed, Jacqueline, it says $737,228 total, which is, and of everything that, and from the levy, it was 401,000, but from the grant, it was $1,600 from this grant fund set.
Yeah.
Eight million. That's why I'm asking the question, like what goes into our prioritization? We don't have to.
Sorry. I think Deputy Mayor, probably a better way to describe it would be what Jacqueline said. We spent a lot of the sidewalk money the few years passed in less in the pavement preservation. It was kind of like which ones were successfully getting grants. A year or two ago, we had an opportunity to get more grant funding for some of the projects, the pavement preservation funding projects. If we had waited and taken the opportunity, so we did wait, which is why you're seeing more occurring later in that, that particular case. So for, at any one year, you see a lot more, a lot less in one of those two programs. But the, the goal was to spend about $3 million in all our city streets preservation and about $900,000 on sidewalks in terms of filling in gaps. And that doesn't include the operation and maintenance side that Jacqueline was talking about, fixing and repairing existing sidewalks.
Okay, cool. Thank you. It'd be good, helpful to have a, a line chart of spending per, you know, sidewalks versus pavement, preservation versus operations, you know, something just to show how, because you're, really good points you made that one year we spent more on one thing, the next year it's going to be less because we need to focus on something. That makes a lot of sense. It just would be good to, to have that view. Thank you.
Yeah, that would be easy enough to do. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
And thank you for coming to present to us tonight. We appreciate having both of you here. Bye. All right. Next up, we have Chief Crone to present on the Fire Training Consortium.
Okay, was I introduced? I got in that black area.
Word. It happened fast. No worries.
Okay. All right, we'll get going. Good evening, Mayor Thompson and councilmembers. Besides providing the highest quality personal protective gear and equipment to our firefighters to enable them to perform their jobs on the fire ground and in the EMS arena, ensuring our personnel are properly trained to respond to all hazards, emergency situations is of paramount importance. As fire chief, I must make every effort to ensure our firefighters receive comprehensive training so that they can do their jobs safely and efficiently and they can return home to their families after shift healthy. As a few of the council members may remember, just over two years ago, I came to council to ask you to approve an ILA to create the North King County Fire Training Consortium. The original training consortium was comprised of the four fire departments on the north end of Lake Washington, Shoreline, North Shore, Woodenville and Bothell. Within the past year, two of these original consortium members have contracted with neighboring fire departments for fire service. As of June 1, what was a consortium of four equal partner members will essentially be two departments, Shoreline and Bothell. One of the drivers for the creation of the North King County Training Consortium was a vision of an entire King County-wide fire training consortium. South King County Fire Training Consortium, which is essentially Renton South, has had a successful fire consortium stood up for over 12 years. It was hoped that in the future, the North King County Fire Training would officially join with South King County Fire to form one single King County Training Consortium. Remaining with the North King County Training Consortium, i.e. Shoreline and Bothell, the two of us, will contract our training footprint and move us away from the goal of a King County-wide training consortium as opposed to expanding our training potential by joining the King County Training Consortium North. I am here today to recommend to council that you consider taking action at one of the June council meetings to be announced, to withdraw from the current training ILA and to approve a new training ILA with Kirkland, Eastside and Bothell as original members. There are a number of reasons why I will be making this recommendation and supporting background information will be provided to you in the appropriate agenda bills. Just to highlight a few of the benefits of joining the new King County Training Consortium North. The annual costs of the new consortium will include a more robust LMS platform, and LMS is a learning management system that will not only keep track of our training records, which is required, like our current RMS service does, and RMS is Records Management System. They're similar but different. A records management just keeps track of records, learning management actually does, keeps track of records, but also actually can provide training. The new LMS system will allow us to share training online with South County Training and soon Seattle Fire, as they are also moving to the same LMS platform. This will give individuals and crews more opportunities to train when their schedule allows and will greatly reduce the time spent by individual departments to develop new training. Academy instructors will also be included in the price of the new consortium. Currently, for each academy, each department is obligated to send one instructor per four to five recruits. Currently, for each academy, each department is obligated to send one instructor per four to five recruits for each academy. The cost of moving an officer from shift to the academy for seventeen weeks plus one hour of overtime every day, the cost of a shift differential for their replacement, you bump somebody up to an acting officer, and the associated overtime to that officer's absence from shift because they're gone exceeds seventy-one thousand dollars per academy. If we have more than five recruits, we need to send two officers and that cost goes to over a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars per academy. Uh it is anticipated that we will have recruits at each of the next two academies in two thousand and twenty-three. I can assure you, I have not taken this matter lightly and consider it a way to move forward to deliver high-quality, affordable training to our personnel today and in the future. I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, I'm not seeing any questions, but it sounds like we're going to get an agenda vote. Councilmember Aldrich.
Thank you, Chief Crone, for being here and talking to us about this. I I would like to better understand how um this might relate to future conversations about regionalization. Um and and is this some like, it sounds to me like this is something that you would pursue regardless. Um but could you comment on on potential regionalization efforts and and the effects that this might have?
Sure. So I consider these two different subjects. Regionalization is is actually combining fire services with one another. A training we have to do, we have to do regardless, doesn't matter where you're at, what you're doing, we have to train. Uh we all work together, all the departments now currently work together across borders. We will continue to do that. Uh but I see the expansion of training and to get uniformed training throughout the county is huge. Um it just, it it reduces costs, it makes more efficiency, it just makes for better um for training for everybody. So um I I don't see that as a hindrance to consolidation in any way. Um um some people have viewed that, there are certain aspects of the training. Um I can, I don't want to get too far, this will all be explained, but one one item is the IMS system, Incident Management System, and that's a big one, is is Blue Card versus uh what we use today, Tactical Guidelines. Both of them are are NIMS compliant, they're both WAC compliant, they're both perfectly legal systems or just a little bit way of dealing business on scene. And so um people are raising some issues about that. And I'm committed um when we uh if in fact council approves us with the new ILA, is holding off on Blue Card for at least a year uh to give us a chance to evaluate it. And if something does happen um and the council decides to take action and a consolidation or contract or whatever that might be in a department that doesn't use Blue Card, we haven't already got gone that direction. So it gives us some time in that area. So hopefully that answered my question.
Councilmember McNeil.
Uh thank you, Mayor. Um and yes, Chief, I kind of had a similar question. Um I think it was brought up about regionalization. My question is more around contracting services. But I I wanted to ask first, um does Shoreline currently have a training uh opportunity? Um how how does that look? You talked about four um original parties participating. Now, if Bothell goes with Eastside, Woodenville, Kirkland, uh where does that leave Shoreline?
So Shoreline effective June one, my understanding is their uh their contract with North Shore takes place. And so North Shore is contracted to Shoreline for service, just like Woodenville contracted with Eastside. So those two entities will be uh one unit. Um um my, I don't, fear is the wrong word, but I I I really got into this to to expand this, to try to make this a county-wide training organization by going with Shoreline, we're essentially kind of contracting into that part of the county, we're not expanding with our neighbors. Um it's just not, I don't think it's a great way forward for training because you could train, you get so much better training when you have more people involved. And you get more heads involved, you get more thoughts involved, you get more better ideas involved. And by going with Shoreline, we're we're going to reduce that pool of potential of folks helping us out, improving our training. And then and that's, that's just not something I'd like to do. So they they would have the ability to do that. They they could have their own uh training program. They have in the past and they've supported that by themselves. Uh it would be, it would be uh uh I guess more of a hardship if we weren't there because they wouldn't have our um money to input in the consortium, but they could still do it uh just fine.
Um so they're, are they're not, so they don't have a training structure set up right now currently?
Right now, the the North King County Training Consortium, uh the offices are headquartered at the Station Fifty-One in North Shore, which is going to be contracted to Shoreline here in in June one, so that won't make any difference to them. And so they can, they can use that same facility to to do their training out of, there's a burn facility there for them, they have a tower there, they've got a tower at the Station sixty-three, um maybe sixty-one uh in Shoreline. So so they have facilities, they have people, uh they have training officers assigned, they have a battalion chief, they have a plan in place to, I believe, make a division chief uh in training as well. And so they have the, they have the people available, uh and some of them are already currently working in the consortium and they would just be uh taking on the training for North Shore and Shoreline.
So what, so if they have something similar, then what would the cost be to to train with Shoreline versus training with Eastside?
So um it's a great question. I will, I will give you full details in the in the A B. But just to to go over the numbers real quick, um I don't want to overload anybody, but right now, today, in the consortium as it stands, and right now, today, that includes uh Woodenville or the members that were Woodenville. So all four members, departments are still involved for this year, for two thousand and twenty-two, we've all paid into it, we're all members of that. Um and we pay uh six thousand nine hundred eighty-four dollars per student per year. And that gives us all our WAC compliant trainings, it gets everybody up to speed, it does everything we need. Um I had anticipated, everything being equal, that the price of that would go up slightly because of the cost of living and whatnot. So I anticipated the cost of seventy-two hundred dollars, seventy-three hundred dollars for next year for that same service. Uh I was presented a proposal uh from essentially Shoreline uh for a uh a consortium that would just be Bothell and Shoreline with North Shore in there. So the three departments, but the two, like I I'd mentioned. Uh and that cost was six thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars, which is seven hundred and nineteen dollars cheaper than we're paying now, which you look at that, you say, well, that's great, it's cheaper, why not stick with it? Well, if you look at the, if you look at the proposal, there's quite a bit that was taken out of the training that I consider very important. We just went to a promoted position for our engineers, which I think is extremely important to have someone knowledgeable to run an engine at a at a fire. And uh part of that proposal, that reduction in their proposal, uh took out the pump academy, they're working to have a pump academy. There's no pump or truck ops provided for, there's no live fire provided for, and they took out a line item that uh provided for some um uh advanced training uh for uh officers. And so when we try to add, when you try to compare the two, they they don't add up. There's, there's quite a bit less offered in the proposal. The proposal for the new consortium is seven thousand fifty-two dollars. So it's, it's sixty-eight dollars more than we're paying now, but that's still within the range where I had anticipated paying anyway. Um but in that, in that, uh the new consortium includes the cost of the training academy. And like I pointed out, that's a huge cost that we really haven't paid a lot of attention to until we started looking at these things. And that's a, that's a big cost that we would save that money, you know, even though we're paying a little more for the per person, we're still saving seventy-two to a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars per academy by not having to put an instructor off the line into the academy. So and then the LMS system is huge too, having that, uh the ability to share information and training uh with our neighbors um is is huge. And so um I think there's some significant upgrades to what we're beginning uh for the new consortium. And again, I'll have all this uh out for you so you can look at it side by side. I might just give you the numbers, you can actually see them in front of you.
Yeah, I'd be uh I'd be really curious to see those those numbers side by side um with the two different entities. Um I'd also be curious to see us negotiate what we need uh for training, what the department needs for training, what you're looking for for training. Um you know, six hundred, seven hundred dollar difference per student. Um you know, how many students do we have? And what does that look like to ensure that we get the full training that we're we're looking for? And comparing apples to apples is is what I would be looking for, for the scene. Um and then and then more importantly, I think Councilmember Aldrich uh alluded to the the regionalization piece, um looking at contract piece. Um if we go do training with Eastside uh or Shoreline for that matter, what does that look like for us contracting down the road? Uh and understanding that um holistically, whether it be regionalization or contracting, um understanding that upfront when we're making this decision, I think is going to be important to have all that information. Just just so that we're well informed on what the impacts could be on the decision that we're making down the road.
Absolutely. I agree with that and I I absolutely do not want to stand in the way, nothing is going to stand in the way of uh of council deciding to go with contracting or something else to the fire department. Absolutely full on board with that uh no matter where we go. And I, and to that end, I would be very, very supportive uh if if council approves us going to this new consortium. And then council decides, and I'm just throwing this out there, say, hey, we we are interested in in joining with Shoreline for whatever reason. My position would be great, let's keep the consortium we're in, let's bring Shoreline in that direction because I think it's really the way to go. I think it's going to be the future for us and it's going to be, it's going to be awesome. So um I'm on board with you, uh Councilmember McNeil, and I'll get you all that information for you.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Zornz is up next, and I'll remind council members that we are going to be getting an agenda bill next month that will presumably have a ton of this information that we're asking for already.
So um in the interest of time, um I'll keep this brief. I uh Councilmember McNeil asked some excellent uh questions. I just, my uh my brief, I I am concerned about hands-on, levels of hands-on experience uh with each program and that if we were to go with Shoreline slash North Shore, um would it be any more difficult to join with the other groups uh in King County down the road?
No, no, I, like I say, the training is is important and but training is training and consolidations or mergers are different things. I mean, they're you're you're working with a few different people, I get that, but when you start talking about actual merging or consolidations or something, whole different ballgame that whatever direction we're going, we can go whatever direction council wants to go.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thanks for coming, Chief. This sounds good. I'm looking forward to seeing more details about it uh next month.
Absolutely. Thank you. Appreciate the time.
All right. Moving on to visitor comment. In keeping with Governor Jay Inslee's Emergency Proclamation twenty twenty-eight regarding open public meetings, the city has accepted visitor comment in writing as well as accepted signup sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the city clerk no later than three P M. Today were forwarded to all city council members and are part of the record. Um city clerk, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
We had um Mayor Thompson, we had one person submit written comments. Um that was Gerald Swanson, who wrote in regarding traffic flow around Main Street and the Boulevard Place Block. We do not have anybody signed up for live comments and I do not see any members of the public in the audience, so that is it. You did skip council committee reports, so if you want to go back to that, that'd be great. Thank you.
Totally right, I did. Um council committee reports, council members. Councilmember Aldrich.
Briefly, I'll report on two. Um I attended the Eastside um Transportation Partnership uh meeting last week and um and heard some really great updates there as well as, oh my goodness, all the names, um the Seashore. Um we talked about uh waste management and one of the ideas that came out of it is um is taking a little field trip for council members around the area to our local no-waste shops. So uh don't be surprised if you get an invitation at some point to to take a little tour and to see how we can um reduce the need for recycling, especially as we find that um that recycling isn't the smoking gun that I was taught in my childhood, it would be um as we struggle to get our our goods recycled. So um that's coming up, looking forward to that. And um I also attended the uh D V I uh Domestic Violence um uh meeting in the area. Um and that has some changes to the Civil Code around a course of control, which now gives more opportunities for victims of abuse to um to get protection orders, um especially knowing that there's always been a gap in if it doesn't rise to the level of criminal behavior, but it's still harassment and protection is still needed. Um this new definition from legislation that has been enacted uh will will provide some some better protection for people who need it. So that's three, there we are.
All right. Next up is the consent agenda. Um nothing was pulled. Do I have a motion to uh Councilmember Doer?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Deputy Mayor.
I second.
All right, the motion to approve the consent agenda was made by Councilmember Doer and seconded by Deputy Mayor Alcabra. Uh if anyone wishes to discuss, let me know. All right, City Clerk.
Please say yes or no when I call your name, Councilmember Zornz.
Yes.
Mayor Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrich.
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil.
Yes.
Councilmember Manke.
Yes.
Councilmember Doer.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra.
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you. All right, moving on to Agenda Bill twenty-two zero seven six, the Fourth Quarter Two Thousand and Twenty-One Budget Status Report. Uh and we have Maureen Schultz here to present to us. Since she's coming down the hall, Lawrence, welcome to the Salary Commission and thank you for serving Bothell if you're watching.
Okay, let me see if I can share my screen here with you. Okay, maybe able to see that screen. Thank you. We've had a little, computer has a mind of its own this evening. Uh so good evening, Mayor Thompson and council members. It's good to see you all. This is the Fourth Quarter Budget Status Report for the year ending December thirty-first of um two thousand and twenty-one. At the council retreat, you saw preliminary preliminary report and this final report uh is status quo, none of the information or data has changed since then. So uh we'll start with citywide revenues and expenditures and how we ended the year. We ended the year in uh citywide with revenues exceeding expenditures. When we talk about citywide, we are talking about all of the funds uh within the city. There are um twenty-two individual funds and as we budget at the fund level, the citywide report encompasses all of those funds. So looking at the year two thousand and twenty-one, some of the highlights in the citywide funds have to do with the proceeds from the sale of us city-owned properties, which totaled thirteen million, four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. We also issued the second round of the fire station bonds, which totaled eight million, one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. We also received six point six million dollars in ARPA funding, also known as the American Rescue Plan Act. Then going on to general fund revenues and expenditures, the general fund ended the year with uh operating surplus of approximately six point seven million dollars. And this was attributed mainly in part to uh these four items. Number one, we had an increase in retail sales tax, which is up two point two million dollars in comparison to uh the two thousand and twenty numbers. We had an increase also in major development revenues. They were up two point one million dollars. We had an increase also in major development revenues, they were up $2.1 million. When we speak of development revenues, we are talking about construction sales tax, building permits, plumbing, mechanical permits, pre-application fees, plan check fees, and development review fees. All of those were, were up significantly from the 2020 numbers. Also be mindful that development revenues are required to be used to support development services functions. And lastly, on the expenditure side, we had a number of vacant positions in 2021. Some of that was due to difficulty in filling the positions, and also the unfunded or frozen positions that were part of the layoffs in the early part of the pandemic. Now moving on to the economic forecast and the trends for 2022. As we move into this year, we will be watching carefully inflation and Consumer Price Index. As many of us are aware, when we go to the grocery store or put gas into our vehicles, inflation rate has gone up and impacted the cost of those goods or services. Also, the Consumer Price Index, also known as CPI, is tied to personnel costs. The Consumer Price Index, CPIW, is what we use for the majority of our union contracts. CPIW is the Seattle Tacoma and Bellevue area, which will be coming out mid-July, we will know what that index is when the Bureau of Labor Statistics give that number to us, and that will definitely be driving part of our, as we look into developing our 2324 budget. Then retail sales tax, you've heard over the last few quarters in our reports that retail sales tax was a high performer in 2021, and we are, will be monitoring that, is that trend going to continue? Are Bothell consumers continuing to purchase and have products delivered to their homes in Bothell whereby we receive the sales tax revenue? Or will they be venturing out more into other shopping malls and other stores outside of our area? I can say for January and February, we now have those two months of sales tax revenues. January was down slightly from 2020, February was up a little bit from 2020, so we'll continue to monitor. We will know, let's see, we will know March revenues at the end of May, so then we'll be able to bring you the first quarter of 2022's report and see how that trend is looking. And then along with the economic forecast, we have to look at the impacts of the pandemic, any supply chains issues, geopolitical concerns. And, and what goes on for the rest of this year. The Puget Sound Forecasters latest report was stating that things, they felt things were looking pretty well for our region. They're estimating at the time this report was written, ending the year with an inflation rate of 5%. We will see how that pans out. But just let you know that we are closely monitoring these and, and watching what the economic forecasters are saying. And we'll be bringing any information and data back to you. And then ending on a positive note, we are gradually seeing that increase in our reserve levels. When council a few years ago updated our financial policies, where we went from a 60-day reserve to a 90-day reserve over the course of the last few years, that we have slowly seen that path growing towards the 90-day level. And at the end of this year, we are, we are getting there. And if we were to include the Budget Stabilization Fund that we set aside the $3 million from the sale of properties, we would be right at the 90-day level, so that is good news. So with that, we will staff as cautiously optimistic as we move into 2022 and, and then into the 2324 by annual budget development. So with that, I will stop sharing my screen and be happy to answer any questions you may have, as well as turning it back to Mayor Thompson.
I mean, we did just have a budget retreat, so it doesn't shock me, given that there hasn't been any meaningful changes, there's not a lot of questions. So Maureen, thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it. I appreciate this information and knowing that we are still cautiously optimistic, and we'll, we'll keep an eye on it from there. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Agenda Bill 22077, an update on 2021, 2022 council priorities for the first quarter of 2022. And I think Erin's going to give this to us.
I am indeed, thank you, Mayor, good evening, council. As the mayor mentioned, this is your fifth quarterly report on the city council goals for 2021 and 2022. Similar timeframe, I'm just a little ahead of where, where Maureen is on her report, so this includes the first quarter of this year. I'm just going to touch on one or two highlights from each of the council priorities. And then we'll be available for questions, along with staff, I have some staff waiting in the wings too, if you have questions for them. So under the topic of pursuing equity through inclusive community engagement, you heard from one of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Community Advisory Committee members earlier this evening. And that committee was established in the first quarter of this year with 14 members from the community. Focusing on long-term financial sustainability. The city has transitioned the business license process to the Department of Revenue, so we're no longer collecting those ourselves. Maintaining the city's existing infrastructure, the downtown overlay and utility project construction has begun. As Jaclyn mentioned during the Safe Streets and Sidewalks report. And as any of you who traveled through downtown have seen the last month or so. Providing a safe and secure community, as was mentioned earlier this evening. The city received a champion award from the Housing Development Consortium for its work on affordable housing. Also, one full-time radar navigator position has been identified and started, actually, I believe in the beginning of, of Q2. But we're just talking about Q1, so that hasn't happened yet. This, we are recruiting for the remaining two full-time navigators. And we're also, the North Sound Radar, both the Executive Board and the City Managers Group have been in conversations about possible expansion of the radar program. And we're actually starting conversations about a new interlocal agreement amongst the agencies to make that happen. And so that we would have navigators available for 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week response. So we're hoping to implement that in early '23. Supporting our community's recovery from COVID-19. Staff launched the Small Business Stabilization and Rent Relief Grant Program, and has, is in the process of distributing those grant funds now. And then finally, striving for environmental sustainability, staff began attending monthly King County Cities Climate Collaboration, or K4C, meetings in the first quarter of this year. And that is my brief report, and I will attempt to answer questions.
Councilmember Doer? And also, I'm impressed that you said K4C without abbreviating it that quickly and well.
Well done, I've never done that.
I agree, I never know what it stands for, I always go King County something, something collaboration. I just wanted to highlight, thank you, Erin, our interim city manager, we're not going to be able to call you that for very long, so I have to remember to, to do it while I can. I just wanted to highlight some things that I thought stood out that I didn't know about. One of them was permit education for residents seeking permits, I think that's a really, really valuable thing for us to do, especially as we're trying to, you know, encourage, encourage the building of ADUs and, and that, that type of middle housing. I think it's great that we're, we're actually giving residents an opportunity to kind of learn about what the process is like. I was super excited to see a hot beverage portable vendor conversation going on. I mean, hot cocoa while I'm walking on the trail sounds pretty fabulous for about 10 months out of the year. I also, Ritter Program, you mentioned it, I think that's, that's really great. I also noticed the North Creek Field Replacements, that's something that's kind of been hanging over our heads for a while, and with two kids that have used those fields extensively during lacrosse season, I'm really excited that we're, we're moving on that. I know those will be used as we come out of the pandemic and things are ramping up again. I did want to ask, I actually, I don't know if the chief's still here, but I wanted to ask the chief about losing recruits, because it's, I was kind of surprised, it seems like, I can't remember the numbers now, but I can go back and look, but it seemed like we lost a fair percentage of our fire recruits during training, and I wondered if that was normal, and if, if someone could speak to that.
So I don't know if Chief Cron is still here, I do know, I, my recollection is, is that we lost three of the six who were in the most recent academy. And I, I do know it is concerning, and it is a challenge for the fire department, they right now are attempting to recruit existing firefighters, so to transfer over from other agencies, so that we don't have to wait so long for them to get trained. I believe the next academy isn't until August, so it is, it is certainly a challenge, and we've had quite a few folks out on medical leave over the past year or so as well, so it's been challenging. Oh, it looks like Chief Cron is available.
Oh, great.
Yes, his hand is up.
Yep. Clerk, if you could bring him back in. He's probably raising his hand desperately like, please shut up. Let me help.
All right, there he is.
Okay, so I believe I got most of the question, it was, is, did the, losing the current recruits impact us? Yeah, it has, we're behind the eight ball and getting in spots filled, and it takes us six months to do that anyway, so we did lose three. We've got one that's on a medical leave for a while, but hopefully we'll get her back next February. So we've, we're in the process of offering four lateral positions. We hope to get them on board by the end of June, which will greatly help. That's a very short turnover, like three weeks orientation, and they'll be on the line. We've interviewed him, we put him through EMS skills, they're, they're all very good. So it's just a matter of getting them on, tuned up, and then we'll have the two that are in the academy join us toward the end of June as well, so we'll have six online, which is great. And then we are still on track, it looks like with some pending retirements, as many as eight in the academy in August.
Is that a typical number to lose?
No, no, well, I mean, in the academy?
Yeah.
So that was, okay, so there's two different things going on, two different processes. We, the process we've had historically was we would have, you test with, we use NTN, National Testing Network. And then we bring in the top, I don't know, 40 or so for a panel interview with firefighters, and then they go to a chief's interview, and then we hire from that. What we've done the last two times is we've started with the speed interviews, so we, this time we brought in 200 to the, to initial interviews with two firefighters, six minutes, three questions, yes or no, do I like these people, do I want to see them again? And then now they're going to the firefighter panel who are going to rank them, so there's 50 people coming to the firefighter panel, they're going to rank. In regards to your question, what happened was, of those folks that we lost, there was kind of a crossover, two of the folks that were in this academy were actually from that previous process, the original long-term process. So in that last process, we just started with the speed interviews, we actually only lost one. One of the four, one of the six was, was in that process, two of them are doing great, the third is on medical, and we lost one. So even though we've lost three total, two were from a previous process, does that make sense a little bit? I think, I think the process we have now with the speed interviews is going to be awesome. It brings in a much, much more diverse work group than we ever could get before with just taking a ranking number from like one to 20 or one to 30. We had several women, more than we ever had in the last group, we've got them in this group, coming in there, people of diverse races, it's, it's amazing what you can pull when you get, you know, 200 people versus 30, right?
I'm sure it doesn't hurt to know that they'll have, the female firefighters will have private, separate quarters, and their new facilities either.
Oh yeah, oh yeah, that's just part of how it is, and separate, separate restrooms, the whole bit, everything's an individual unit, so yeah.
Do we, um, no, thank you so much, I'm just curious, like, to how, so do we just eat the cost of training when they drop out?
Yep, yep, and it's, it's, it's not cheap, I give you that. However, we are committed to providing firefighters that are well-trained and being capable and ready to do the job. And if, if they're in the academy, and they're showing signs that they, they may need some work when they get out. I don't, I don't think we want to put that effort, if they can't, if the academy is going to be the best they're ever going to be in their career, they have got to be spot on. And if they can't do it then, I'm not sure we want to take the, the risk of it. Now, we still have a year once to get out of the academy for probation, and we still do evaluate them then. But I would rather, you know, have to terminate someone, it's unfortunate, early on, than, than spend more time with them going through.
Can I ask, is it part of the, I mean, I guess I'm just wondering, you know, everyone talks about having commitment and, you know, people having a stake in it. So there's no way that we could have consequences for them dropping out after we've spent money, like even if it's small, just that, you know, to show some sort of commitment, it, it just seems like there are plenty of people who, who pay for college, and it's on them whether they drop out or not. I'm just curious what your thoughts are.
The firefighters, the recruits have a stake in it?
Yeah, like, paying for them to go through training and then they quit, we're stuck with the cost, not them.
Yeah, well. Okay, to be honest, what happens sometimes is we give them the opportunity to resign or be fired. A lot of the time, they take the resignation, yeah, so we don't have people, I can't remember anybody who just came on one day and said, I'm done. That's not really how it works. It's, they want this job, and they've, you know, they've faced it, they've quit their other job, and they've committed, they're, they're all in, so they're, they're trying to make this work, and we're, we're trying to make it work with them, we absolutely want them to succeed, and we do whatever we can to do that.
Yeah.
Sometimes it just doesn't work out, and it's, it's not for everybody, it's, it's a tough job, it's very demanding, it's very specific. But we, we're doing the best we can, and I, and I think the process we have now on board is going to get some great results for us, especially on the, on the DEI considerations, and still get really good employees, we're really excited about that.
No, thank you, that's, that's really helpful, just to have some insight into it, because otherwise it just looks like, wow, we're spending money and half the people drop out, so that's, that's really helpful, thank you.
This, this was an anomaly, I can guarantee you that, hopefully going forward, we won't, we won't see this again.
Okay, super, thank you. I think that concludes my comments, I'm just really excited to see so much happening under the Parks Department. Considering the last couple of years, I think we're, we're really investing in the Parks Department and making things happen for our residents, particularly around, you know, the, the Friday night street parties, so thanks, everybody, for their work on that.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, you're.
No, no.
All right, well, if I, there aren't any other questions, and Deputy Mayor, are you working on a solution for your audio? I don't want to just run past you if there's something you can do to get it to work. Yeah, no. Yeah, okay, now, you don't sound like, you don't sound like the teacher in Peanuts anymore.
Oh, okay.
But we.
I have nothing to say.
All right, well, in that case, I'm going to move on to council conversations. Does council have any items they would like to discuss? Councilmember Zornz?
I can't tell you how long I've waited for us to be at a civil hour where I could talk about a few things. So indulge me a little bit. One is, just to remind people, as I go out and walk, our drains still need clearing, so.
One is, just to remind people, as I go out and walk, our drains still need clearing, so if you're walking and you see a clogged drain, swipe it, swipe it with your foot. And then the other one is, you know how I got to do Unsung Heroes in Bothell? And I've had this one since before the start of the year, and it's David Hayward of Carolina Smoke. So folks who are unfamiliar with him, I want to list off some of the ways he's contributed to Bothell. One, he was a Marine. He was, he's also a son of, I can't, no, you never was a Marine, are you? You're all, you're still, once you're a Marine, you're always a Marine, right? I think that's the way it goes. He's a son of a sharecropping family in the Carolinas. And then the ways he's blessed Bothell, I don't think most of Bothell knows about. Aside from his top drawer food, I'm not even a ribs fan, you know, barbecue ribs fan, and his, and I salivate when I see his barbecued ribs. He also does salmon for soldiers, which I didn't know about this program, but what they do is they take vets out and they take them salmon fishing. And then afterwards, when they're done fishing, he treats them all to dinner at his place, at his restaurant. He also is a supporter of Gift Burns the Boot program. He fundraised for K-Rob when K-Rob was fighting cancer, for those of you who are familiar with his battle with cancer. And then he, he fundraised for Officer Shoop. He's the only person who did that when he was murdered. He routinely donates food. And aside from being a big bowler, he will give mentor, he will mentor and assist small, fellow small businesses. So someone commented to me, it's a frustration that the city hasn't recognized him for who he is and what he's done. So next time you're in Carolina Smoke, give him a big thank you. He's, he's quite the hero. I also, I don't know if Bothell's aware, Edmonds tried to get him to move during the start of COVID, take him away from Bothell. And then there's a, and then there's a multifamily development going in in Linwood, and he's going to be an anchor store for that development in Linwood, and I don't know if that's instead of Bothell or in addition to Bothell. But he's pretty popular, so there's, there's my props to Dave Hayward. The other thing is, show of hands or comments of people who have talked to folks who live in Boulevard Place? Has anyone talked to any of those folks who live there? Because I don't want to be redundant. Boulevard Place Shag, from what I understand, it was, was, it's intention is to be affordable housing for seniors, right? But what's happened is, that's happening, but there's also a lot of folks who are a lot more frail, who are there instead of, say, assisted living. And all the emails that we've been getting from people protesting about the one-way traffic, I don't know if that's gotten on your radar. If it hasn't, the situation they have is that where their vans, pick them up and drop them off, now instead of being coming, able to come up to the curb and allow the seniors to step off onto a curb level and then straight into the shag, step down onto the street because they're headed the other direction. It's a bigger drop, and then they have to cross trap, cross lane, they're not on there, on the curb, on the sidewalk, and go into shag. So, so for those who, who have mobility issues, it, it's quite a hazard. So when people say they've seen someone fall, that's the context. The concern, talking with our interim city manager, rightfully so, this is on the management of shag. But the other access point is on the north side of the building, and it's on a slope. And there's water runoff from the building, and in the winter, it's solid ice. So I'm expecting that we will hear more, more from the residents who, and our neighbors who live there. So just to give you a little backstory, if you're wondering what's happening there at Boulevard Place, that's what I know about it.
After last week's meeting, we do not have a chatty bunch. Right, well, I think we can adjourn. Oh, Councilmember Aldrich.
I will say a thank you to Councilmember Doer. My email list has grown. There's been a couple dozen people who've requested to, to add after, after your announcement to your email list, and so that is still something that I do and will continue to do, although this week was really fun, got thrown off, not only because of Mother's Day, but because I also got to attend a birth over the weekend in my, in my day job, my night job. And, yeah, so still got that, that update out, even though it was a little late and I had to get some sleep first.
Thank you so much for doing it, and I just, I want to give you a heads up, because I I never quite completely got the hang of it, but they really appreciate when you BCC them. They don't want to see everybody on the list. And every time.
I learned that the wrong way, yes, and I very, am very intentional about BCCing. Yep, thank you for the warning.
I made that mistake a few times and just felt terribly guilty, but for some reason, after time goes by, I forget again, so I'm really glad that you're doing that. I think people really appreciate knowing what's going on, so.
And I'm one of the subscribers, and I think they're really thorough, and I really appreciate the job you're doing on that, Councilmember Aldrich.
I'm being watched. Not just by our community, but by the mayor. I, I think I knew that you were on there. That's fine.
I had to email you to get on there, so it shouldn't have been a big surprise.
I forgot. Just remember. I just blocked it.
Yeah.
Remember, you can't have more than a quorum, like, there's, you can only have, like, one, one other person on it from the council, I believe. So just be aware. I, I don't get it, so.
I, I have been careful about that and watching, so, yeah, Mason's on there, and if one other person wants to volunteer, I will accept the first one who emails me.
I just remember after past elections, I had to, I had to unsubscribe some people.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mayor.
I was going to say, let's, let's go into executive session. I'm going to take like two minutes before executive session, if anybody else needs to do something quickly. And we will adjourn from there for members of the public. Deputy Mayor.
You answered my question. I was going to ask if we have to come back here after that.
And, and Mr. Mayor? Are we, are we convening an executive session pursuant to RCW 42311011F in order to receive and evaluate complaints or charges brought against a public official or employee that will last until 8:00 PM and will adjourn from there? Is that correct?
You took the words right out of my mouth.
Yeah, I thought so. Thank you.
Thank you.